I'll call to order the meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Pottstown Borough Council, September 6th, 2017. Would you please rise for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of leadence to the flag.
The individuals are in traffic and we'll insert that upon their arrival. So going to four, the subcommittee reports, infrastructure, councillor Culp.
It'll be in your packet for next week.
Okay. Economic Development and Business, Lee is on. Mr. Keller.
Just a couple of quick updates for you tonight. There weren't any updates on the grant, on the grant list. We went over those at the previous meeting. But we have a couple of grants we're looking at that are potentially in the works. So we're looking at the DCED Keystone Grants and the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Housing Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund. This is a new grant fund and we're coordinating with Hobart's Run, PAID and PDA to find out which one of these programs would best match our needs. And we're looking for short and long-term opportunities. So some of the short-term opportunities that we've identified through these sources would be establishment of a small business or low-interest loan program for commercial properties in the PDA district, home renovations for low-to-moderate income owner-occupied homes in distressed neighborhoods, the security camera program. And as a long-term opportunity, we'd like to look at having the borough designated as a Keystone Enterprise Zone, which would allow eligible businesses to receive federal tax credits. Also, it would allow businesses in town to receive priority bidding on state and government contracts, as well as financial assistance for contaminated, cleanup of contaminated sites and priority for state liquor licenses. So it's a, it's a pretty, a pretty great program. It's hard to get into and you have to have a five-year plan and a lot of private partnerships in order to make it work. Nonetheless, we've been in discussions with DCED and our economic development entities in town to see what opportunities we may have there. Some of the projects underway right now, right now, we're wrapping up the Laurel and Washington Street Floodwater Mitigation Program, or project. All the underground pipe work is now complete. Final paving is the only item remaining. We're expecting the base paving to take place on Friday, September 8th. So Industrial Highway and Washington Street between Laurel and Industrial Highway will be closed for at least half of the day, if not the full day, on September 8th, so that they can get in there and do that paving. We're still working through the King Street pedestrian crossing. We had TPD go out and conduct traffic counts at the, or pedestrian counts at the mid-block intersection. And then they'll be setting up a coordination meeting with PennDOT in the next couple of weeks as well. We're also coordinating with the Schuylkill River Heritage Area for replacement of, I should say, stabilization of the abutment at the Riverfront Park Bridge. We're not sure when construction will happen and it'll depend on the amount of permitting time that's required by DEP. But we're kind of tentatively targeting a four- to six-month timeframe on that, on that project. Other than that, there's some other events that people are going to present on tonight. But one of them that I'd like to bring up is the Can Jam on September 30th. Also, the airport open house will happen that day. And Schuylkill River Greenway Heritage Area is going to conduct a ride for the river between the Schuylkill River Trail and, and the airport and Can Jam on September 30th as well. So we have that to look forward to on September 30th. And also want to mention that on, in addition to Veterans Community Day on the 23rd of September, the Latino Festival will also be occurring that day in the afternoon. So that's all I have for now.
Okay, great.
Justin, I have a question.
Sure.
For your, for the partnership between PAID, PDA and Hobart's Run, I have some concerns. There are other organizations and groups that have been in the borough of Pottstown committed for many years, working on rehabilitation of distressed housing. Why are they not included in that group of think tank? Habitat for Humanity, Genesis Housing.
Well, essentially Habitat and Genesis would be eligible to kind of go for these same funding mechanisms that we're, that we're looking at. Most of them would be eligible to go for that.
Wouldn't that be true of Hobart's Run as well?
Yeah, yeah.
And then my concern about all these groups is they're focused on a very limited area in the borough of Pottstown. So when you're looking at rehabilitation of distressed housing with these three groups that you're looking at, are you looking at a limited area or borough-wide?
It depends on the, on the nature of the, on the program. Like for the Enterprise Zone, we would look at that borough-wide, but...
Specifically distressed housing?
Yeah, distressed housing. And some of the programs have to go to low-to-moderate income housing, but we did talk about only, you know, allowing owner-occupied, low-to-moderate income housing, if that was a, if that was a preference, that would be allowed under the, under the grant program.
But, but there's distressed, there's distressed housing throughout the borough. So I'm just making sure this is being spread throughout the 5.2 square mile radius and not just a certain neighborhood.
That's, that's still to be determined, really, really. We're just trying to figure out what, what incentives these grant programs offer and then how we can fit that, best fit that to certain projects and certain neighborhoods. And it's, you know, it's going to depend on what the conditions are in a certain neighborhood in order to get eligibility. Obviously, the neighborhoods that are more distressed are going to get higher ranking in, in terms of the grant application. So, but when possible, I mean, we like to make most of the programs available borough-wide when possible, unless that particular funding source requires us to target a specific geographic area. Any other questions?
Ward 1, 7 and 6, as a contiguous map of...
I'd have to look at a map to see, you know, it's basically around the area of the Hill School.
Right. So that's not any type of, that's just a focus. It's not a discriminatory tactic. It's just a focus. I guess that's what we're doing.
I just want my focus to be available borough-wide, since there's distressed housing throughout the borough.
Yeah, and I think the programs that we're looking at, I mean, you know, you mentioned Genesis and Habitat. They would be eligible to, you know, apply under those programs more than likely, depending on how they're structured. If that answers your question, but...
Yes, ma'am.
It's really, we're just, we're just gathering information right now. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I promised we would insert our number three item. Be hearing a presentation from Montgomery County Emergency Services, commendations for emeritus service. Chief?
I know, Michelle Smaller, sorry. I'm going to call the microphone, Michelle Monza. Many of you know Michelle. She's from Montgomery County Emergency Services and she's no stranger to Pottstown. She's a good friend of the police department. She is, hangs out with our SWAT, our negotiators and they come tonight to present or award. Michelle?
My partner, John Fulford, is with me. As said, from Montgomery County Emergency Service. We do a crisis intervention specialist class for law enforcement on educating law, how to interact and identify mental illness. Very proud that Pottstown has, the majority of their officers have gone through that. Not to mention, they've also sent all of their officers through stress management training, which they are only one of two departments in the whole county that have trained every single officer on that. So I have great pride. I've worked, over the years, actually, Mark, I think you got me started working with the SWAT team. We've, John and I have both, we've played the roles of role players, we've provided education to them. And when we looked at, John was actually involved in the call. John Fulford and I were both trained mental health negotiators, so we're used as consultants for many of our regional teams. And Chief Foltz actually called us that night. I was not available, so John went in my place, came from like an hour away to actually be there. And the way he described this call, and I will read the commendation, but just so you all know, I believe it was January 6th, January 6th of this year. It happened at the best time, 3:00 approximately, on a Friday evening. And yet, all of these officers showed up amongst the rest of their team members. It was a residential neighborhood. There was concern of not just the, the gentleman involved of being suicidal, but involved some other critical incidents. And they spent that time negotiating. And the SWAT team, the reason that we included not just the negotiators, but the SWAT team is because quite honestly, they don't get the recognition for all the calls that they do. And I've been involved in many calls and have knowledge of many calls that they have done. And to the best of my knowledge, they have never gotten recognition and commendation for the dedication and the professionalism they have. So, did you want to add anything? Because I...
No, I, I was basically called out to do a role and I found no role to take. These guys were, and gals were doing a fantastic job. They spent four hours or five hours in the cold, it was below 30 degrees, and they worked the problem very beautifully. So I think my role was more of a witness to, to a very good job and I wanted to express that out.
Okay. So should I bring everybody up, or do I just read the commendation and memoring everybody up?
Read the commendation and read their names. We can read the names and stand up.
All right. Just so you all know, I really botched this last night when I was at Limerick. Apparently, I read like a fifth grader, so if you can bear with me. On January 6th, 2017, the Limerick Township Police Department attempted to serve an emergency protection from abuse order in the 200 block of Masters Drive. Police found the individual several homes away from his residence parked along the curb. Officers found the car to have dark window tinting and upon approach to the vehicle, they observed a male occupant display a handgun. The officers immediately took cover and began to contain the scene. An officer needing assistance alert was dispatched to all the area police agencies. The Montgomery County SWAT West Region immediately responded to assist. Their negotiating team began communicating with the armed subject. SWAT negotiators took their lead from police on the scene and established quality communication and rapport with the individual. Police officers present at the scene joined in a collaborative effort and provided vital assistance with the Limerick Township Police Department. As a result of the team's collective efforts, the subject surrendered several hours later without injury to himself, the officers on scene, or the public. The police conduct during this event demonstrated full awareness and complete understanding of the mental health of an individual and commitment to ensuring that the safety of all involved. Montgomery County Emergency Service Crisis Specialist School acknowledged the dedication and professionalism of the incident commanders and the officers who actively, actively participated in resolving this dangerous situation. And this is, we are here on behalf of our CEO, William Myers.
Let me just add, I was, I was on the job that night. It was cold and I'm a house cat now because I sit inside a lot, so it was cold, but they did a phenomenal job. It was a roller coaster ride, the entire event, and we really weren't sure how it was going to end. And you run through your mind all the scenarios that could possibly happen and the best possible scenario for our, our squad and the region happened is exactly like they train and exactly like they planned. So I'm very, very, very proud of all of them. Do you want to read the names?
I would ask you guys to step up a few more. Okay, we have Corporal Stephen Morrison. These are a note, Woodrow. Sorry. Detective Mark Wickersham. Detective Brooke Fisher. Officer Christopher Zawarchak. And I know he doesn't want this, but we are also recognizing all incident commanders that were on scene that night because they also come out on their own time. So Chief, Richard Brunt.
Thank you, gentlemen, your SWAT negotiators.
We are now back at C Transportation, councillor Culp. Ricketts Center, Ricketts Community Center, councillor Kirkland.
Yes, there is a report in your packet. Nevertheless, I'm going to read for the audience's sake. Some bullet points. The after-school program will begin September 11th. It goes from 2:30 to 7:00 PM. Registration is going on now at the Ricketts Center, 10 to 5, Monday to Friday. Day for kids starts September 30th and that will take place in hours 11 to 3:00 PM. Members-only Hill School Saturday program, that will take place once a month. The first one will be September 23rd and that will go on 11 to 3:00 PM. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Pottstown School Board, Mr. Heidel. Anyone from the school district? Library, Mr. Green.
If you will remember, last month, I indicated that we had a visit from the Schuylkill Highlands, not from Schuylkill Highlands, but from the landscapers who are working under the Schuylkill Highlands Grant for the water abatement, mapping of the library plot. They did this survey and this current month, we met yesterday to get a preview as to what recommendations they were going to have. Essentially, they've given us a sort of a wish list kind of presentation. If we do all of the things that are on the wish list, it's going to cost us somewhere around $235,000. Obviously, the library doesn't have that kind of money, but they were wise enough in their presentation to divide the work up into plots so that we could phase it over time as the money arrives. We could do different portions of it. But essentially, what the goal will be is to control the water flow from the building, which has historically had problems of water in the basement, and to control the traffic through the parking lot, allow us to have as much parking space as possible, and to utilize the space around the library apart from the parking in the best possible way for teaching or other kinds of program use. So the challenge is pretty good and I was quite impressed really by what we heard there. So we're looking forward to working further with the consultants. There's some testing that has to be done in the parking area to see if some of our proposals are feasible. And obviously, the library and the community is going to have to raise some money at some point in the next, hopefully, several years to get all of this done. But that's where we are. We're beginning to make some progress and we have some fairly good ideas about what to do. I want to give a shout-out and congratulations to the library staff. The eclipse brought the largest crowd we've ever had at the library. We had the week before, the weekend before, that Tuesday, we had over 1,200 people come through the doors. We know that that's a low number because sometimes parents and kids come in together, two or three at a time. So we know we had at least 1,200 people come through the door. We gave away all of the 450 pairs of special glasses, eclipse glasses, that you could use to watch it directly. And the kids had a great time decorating their shirts, their t-shirts that they brought in with the paints and materials that the library provided. And there was a lot of learning that took place in that process. So that was probably one of the best days we've had. It was fun for all of the family people who attended. And just think, folks, we can do it again in seven years, 2024, we're going to have another eclipse. Lastly, I'd like to remind the adults particularly, tomorrow is the first Thursday of the month. The 21st is the third Thursday of the month. There's been a lot going on at the federal level with regard to immigration issues, the US budget, tax reform issues, the debt limit. Please stop to see Representative Ryan Costello at the library. He will be there, or a representative from his office will be there, from 11:00 in the morning through 5:30 at night. So it's always the first and third Thursday. I'm asking all of you, regardless of where you stand on the issues, let the man know what we, what we want, so that they can do the right thing at the federal level. Apart from that, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Yes?
Does the library need assistance while helping to do any of the programs you want? So most of the plans do. The adult programs, the children programs, they do keep a tally of how many people come through. And that information is available if you'd like to have some example of that.
Next is ad hoc zoning, councillor Prescott.
We're continuing to work on the zoning for the downtown. Actually, last week, we took a walking tour and inventory, pretty much of the property that's in that zoning district. So we know exactly what we have and what we hope to have.
Good. Thank you. Animal Committee, vice president Miller.
Just a reminder of the upcoming pet fair, September 16th, Memorial Park, 9 to 3. Hope to see you all out there adopting a nice little furry friend.
I don't know if you're aware of some programs or about some animal house projects. People who are having trouble...
No, and they'll also be, they'll also be there at Animal House. I believe the Animal House Project will be there. But they're located on Hanover Street in Chester County now, that they have programs for spay and neuter, for feeding, for providing food for spayed and neutered animals through their program, or prove that the animal was spayed and neutered at no cost. So it's just an application process to pay them a visit. So really, if you're, if you're, if you're having a problem with your income and you do not have a spayed and neutered animal, there really is no excuse not to get your animal spayed and neutered. These programs available and they are at no cost. I'll look it up for you, it's on Hanover Street, but I'll, I'll get you the number.
They're also giving, helping people to buy the food that they can't afford.
The food, they supply the food as well.
Thank you. Safety, chief Drumheller.
We're rapidly approaching the one-year mark of the cameras. And actually, unfortunately, one of our successes in picking the locations is also now one of our failures, is what's going to, we have put them on a lot of the light posts and the standards in, in the downtown on High Street, where we all got all these new standards and lights and everything, and now we have to move the cameras to, and it's going to take a little bit of effort. We're going to have the company come back and at the same time, they're going to add two new cameras to the system. So we're pretty excited about that, but my man Doug here behind me is working hard on it. He's smiling, shaking his head. Well, we didn't anticipate that, but unfortunately, that's one of the byproducts of it. October the 28th is National Drug Takeback Initiative. We will, we'll be working with the DEA and again, that's one of the things where you can come and bring all your used or unwanted prescription medicines and we'll take them and we'll dispose of them, we turn them into the DEA. Interesting, I have a, an add-on to our uniform for November. In November, I'm going to be running a, a no-shave month for the police officers. They're, they, they donate $25 and that, we're going to use that money to buy gifts for children around the holidays. And for the month of November, they agreed to waive the policy on uniform appearance and I'm going to allow them to grow a beard. Well, with the exception of the two females, who I'll allow them to change their clothing and, and deviate from the uniform. So as long as they don't go to court. But it's something different, it's something new. It's, so you're going to see cops with beards for a little bit. I'm actually going to grow one and I think I talked your solicitor into growing one too. We'll see how that works out.
You got to jump start over.
I'm probably going to look like Santa Claus. So, and the last, I want to point out to everybody, as school has started, so I caution everybody in the public to drive slow and watch for children as they're crossing the streets and try and keep Pottstown as safe as we possibly can keep it. Thank you.
Very good.
Chief Drumheller. And the community or any of us can sponsor an officer if we'd like, because I, there's a reluctant sergeant that I'd like to sponsor to encourage him to grow a beard for the, for the month of November.
Well, you can ask him. There are some that, that may choose not to, but are also, are still going to donate towards the project. And, and again, when you think about what we're doing, it's a worthy goal for people who would normally not get gifts around the holiday. Thanks.
Very good. Mayor's Report.
Thank you, President Green. I'd like to go back to our community vigil for solidarity with Charlottesville during their recent time of escalated activities that drew the eyes of the nation into the center of types of conflict that we're not usually encountering. However, the community came together under the coordination of Jonathan Corson from the local chapter of the NAACP and Stacy Woodland, the executive director of the YWCA. And it was a beautiful day to show solidarity. There were people of all types. I'd say maybe there was about 200 people there or so, 300, something like that. A lot of children, people had signs and there was love in the hearts of the community to come out and show their solidarity. I'd just like to also acknowledge the, the level of synchronization that's involved in domestic violence concerns, whether it's in our community or any community. But when you add on the factors of mental illness and weapons of any type, the amount of, you know, the fragile nature of it and the need for everybody involved to maintain the dignity of the individuals while enforcing the law and ensuring the safety is truly a commendable act. And I'd just like to echo how proud, how proud I am and all of us should be regarding our police force and when they are brought to the forefront in this type of, in this type of, I wouldn't call this celebration, but it's something to showcase and caveat the work that they do every day. So I just wanted to bring light to that. Also, coming up on September 16th, there will be a Night of Healing and that Night of Healing is for the entire community... of Healing is for the entire community and region of the Pottstown area, and it will be outside. It will be at the Ricket Center from 5:00 to 7:30. So, everyone is invited. And the very next day is a national event, Back to Church Sunday, and that's to encourage people to, who have their roots in church per se, but wherever or however you worship, that those places would be full on that Sunday. And I'd like to put that onus on the pews and not the pulpits, so that each person who can have a heart of conviction towards the way they worship and believe would make sure that their place of worship was brought on board to that national activity. Also, looking forward to the events of the Can Jam and the Veterans Community Day and the Latino Festival.
Thank you.
Oh, I did want to say one more thing. This is about item 17, and maybe I should leave my remarks in the comments. I'll wait. Thank you.
Now?
No.
How about the reports from our borough manager?
Thank you, Ms. Wynn. First, sadly, I want to advise council, those of you that aren't aware, on August the 19th, Maple Street resident Edmund Scarbeck passed away. Ed served as our sixth ward councilman from 1973 through 1981. He was Borough Council President from 81 to 85, and he served as the mayor of Pottstown from 85 to 89. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the Scarbeck family. Last month, I had told you that we would be meeting with the county to discuss land banking in the hopes that they would support our effort. The concept was positively received by the County Tax Claim Bureau, and they have indicated they are willing to assist us with the land banking. With that said, I think later this month, the steering committee will be meeting, and I believe we're still on target to have the ordinance ready for the December council Rather than doing it as an add-on, I want to let council know that the police department is again going to be applying for a JAG grant. Rick, would you be willing to explain to council what that's going to entail?
Obviously, the JAG grant is a hundred percent match, I mean, a hundred percent funded. We don't match anything, and we've been receiving it for the last several years. This year, it's going to be approximately $17,000, and our, we're earmarking it for computer systems for the police cars that will actually digitally reproduce traffic citations and automatically upload them to the DJ's office. That's what we're striving for. It comes with printers and the equipment's in the car. And also, in there is a chunk of money we use for Safe Neighbors, we use for Holiday Initiative, and anything that we so desire, but we call it, you know, it's just part of the block money that we get.
Thank you, Chief. That will require, the JAG grant requires a public hearing. I believe it will be advertised this Friday, so that we can hold the hearing on Monday night. The last item I want to talk about, I want to brief you in regard to the development of our operating budget for 2018. You may recall that during the budget process last year, we advised you that we believe that this year, the 2018 budget year, was going to be a difficult year, more difficult than 2017 budget. Currently, the delta in our funds or in the general fund between what we have and what we need is around one and a half million. Parks and Recreation Fund, around 51,000. In the library fund, we're short around 5,000. Parking Lot Fund, around 38,000. The Trash Fund, around 350,000. The Fire Fund, around 254,000. The Debt Service Fund, around 63,000, and the Grant Fund, around 110,000. The reason for the gap, increased cost of doing businesses, goods and services, increased contractual personnel costs and obligations, mainly related to healthcare, and most significantly is we continue to see a decrease in the borough's assessed valuation. When we proposed the 2017 budget, you may recall that the county had initially forecast the borough's assessed valuation at 806 million. By the time the reassessments were in last year, for this year's tax year, we started 2017 with assessed valuation of 804 million. So, we already started behind the curve with last tax revenue than we anticipated. Fast forward to this past July, because of reassessments, our assessed valuation is now put at 802 million, anticipating there are many reassessment hearings or rulings to come, many decisions regarding tax exemptions to come before the end of this year. So, we believe the assessed valuation is going to go down even more, most likely somewhere around the 780 million mark. Significant reduction. In spite of the increases in the cost of doing business over the past years, we have shaved and shaved and shaved the borough operating budget, frankly, to bare bones with little or no room for capital investment, cost overruns, or unforeseen expenditures. Justin's passing out a graphic that will show you the decline in borough's tax value, or assessed valuation as compared to the borough budgets and to the tax millage over the past years. Since 2012, Borough Council has opted to balance the budget with little or no tax increase, borrowing from fund reserves to balance the budget, to close the gap. In 2012, we did a .036 mil tax increase, and 13 .001, and 14 .099, and 2015 and 16 no increase, and last year, a .029 mil tax increase. We're now at the point where taking money from our fund reserves is really not a viable option. We continue to work on potential cost savings for 2018, retirement incentive, renegotiating costs with some of our vendors, cutting and skimping where possible, but frankly, we've been through this exercise so many times that we've shaved and cut to the point where any more is going to come at a cost to the services we provide to the community. I just want to tell you that council's going to have to make some tough decisions over the next few months, providing direction as to what services you're willing to cut, or frankly, if you're not willing to cut services, the level of tax increase that you're going to be comfortable with. That's the extent of my report.
Thank you, sir.
I have one question. Did you, did you consider what the increase would be to compensate for the 1.5 million without any other consideration?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Okay, you said that the deficit is 1.5 million?
In the general fund.
Okay. So, do you know the millage to break even?
To break even?
Right.
I do believe we have that.
In other words, is the cost, or there's a decrease of services, or the other?
So, Janice, do you have it broken down by fund, the millage increase? I can tell you that overall, the millage, the increase would be a 23.27% increase. That's to cover not only the general fund deficit, but the deficit in all funds.
Right. What was that number again?
23.27%.
None of this is a surprise, though. I mean, in the budget book that Janice gave us, it's clear as day. The sentence is in there. If we do not do something to raise taxes, we are in for a disaster. It's there. So, this should not be a surprise.
It's not a surprise. I just wanted the people who are listening to hear the intensity of what we're dealing with.
Let me emphasize, what we're not seeing, and what the general public is not seeing, maybe they can if we distribute this, is the constant decrease in assessments here in this borough. You know, it's a process. The individual property owner goes to the county, asks for a reassessment to lower it. They do. So, that means it did not change our expenses, it just has to be shared with their neighbors. So, their neighbors go and they get theirs reassessed, and the next one gets them reassessed. And the burden still keeps falling back on everybody else that owns property in the borough. The individual houses is one part, but when the larger buildings and industries and commercial units, when they start getting their reassessments, that drops it very much and very fast. And maybe we can get this to the media so that they can explain to the general public the burden that's been placed on this, this borough because of the reassessments. I'll try to get it out to you. Okay. Hey, Will. Anyhow, but we go through this exercise each time, and it always starts high, and then, you know, our loyal staff, they work hard, council works hard to see just what we can do by the year's end to balance this. Okay, seven's a presentation. Veterans Community Day on September 23, 2017. Andy Graham, Kathy Peretti, welcome.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for letting me present this tonight about the Veterans Community Day and also the Veterans Island Project. So, now that you're all in a good mood after that last report, here's something maybe a little bit more, a little bit more fun. So, on September 23rd, we're doing our first community day, actually, our second Veterans Community Day at Memorial Park. There's a bigger reason for community day, and it's to spearhead the Veterans Island Project. And the project is to be a committee that will under, that will operate under the auspice of the Pottstown Parks and Recreation Department. The intention is to transform the island at Memorial Park to a tribute to American veterans developing projects aimed at improving and maintaining the island area, submitting them to Parks and Rec Department for approval, and then develop fundraisers and soliciting donations and sponsorships to raise the funds needed to complete approved projects. We would definitely work with the Parks and Rec Department under their guidance to look also for matching funds and grants for any money that we may raise. Potential projects, the World War II Memorial, the bandstand, the World War II era canon that sits at one of the entrances, could be refurbished and actually used in salutes sometimes, and we could like relocate that closer to the World War II Memorial. It is a World War II canon. I've had someone research it for me. Implementation of walkways and pathways that would connect the existing memorials and maybe some future memorials, and maybe be able to designate areas in, on the island for some other memorials to either wars or conflicts or veteran groups if they would choose. To kind of like have it already spaced out if people in the area or the county were looking for space. It's like we have space here, if this is where you would like to build your memorial. Of course, installation of public art for added appeal to visitors, educational signage, and to create more defined entrances to, on both bridges on both sides with signage and sculpture. The World War II Memorial is kind of like our first project that we want to address. Parks and Recs is currently looking to replace the lighting there because, as everyone knows, the flag must be lit at night, and I don't know, we could be like one light bulb away from not being able to fly the flag over the World War II Memorial. You could see the pictures of the lights that are there right now. Also, there's a problem with the plaques. We've had one, maybe two plaques fall down. There's something wrong with the structure, from what I understand. Parks and Recs is looking into it to see what exactly the problem is, and it seems, from what I've been told, that every plaque may eventually fall down. Could be next week, could be 10 years from now. But they're looking into a solution as to how, how to fix it, either one at a time or maybe all at one time. That's a process ongoing right now. And this all started because I said I have some money donated to me to do some landscaping around the memorial, and then it kicked off this whole series of events. So, we would love to do landscaping, power wash the memorial, and have it be as much of a focal point as the Vietnam Vets Memorial is right now. The bandstand. The bandstand, as you see, that white is on both sides. In the middle is a plaque that was donated in, I believe, 1955 as a honor to all our men and women in the service. The white area, a lot of times, is graffiti, possibly not like most important or high on the list, a nice mural or mosaic would look good there, maybe it would stop the graffiti on the walls. The stonework and the brickwork needs to be repaired, as you can see. It's, it's just crumbling, falling apart. Interestingly, when I talk about this to other people, I've had a lot of people say that they would donate their time and their services to help do this, but of course, it has to be looked at as, do we start again? Do we rip things out, rebuild, or do we just patch? Have to work with Parks and Rec and the small committee that we are. We would do whatever we could to raise some money to help spur that along. What's old is new again. You'll see the illustration there, the Living War Memorial. That was on loan to me, that's on loan to me from Janice Bechtel Frederick. Those of you who've been in Pottstown a long time know the Bechtel family and how important they were in the formation of Memorial Park. This was an actual ad that appeared in the Mercury, I believe, in June of 1955, trying to, again, push this project forward because it was, it goes back to 1919, when they were trying to get the park going, first through the Rotary Club and then through the Kiwanis Club. Both experiencing setbacks, and then in the 50s, the Bechtel fam, Mush Bechtel and some other people formed a committee to kind of like push this along again. Is there a need for this project? I say yes. Currently, the island houses the Vietnam War Memorial, the World War II Memorial, the bandstand, a canon from World War II, several commemorative plaques, and the Vietnam veterans. The Vietnam Vet Memorial is totally maintained by the chapter in town. They raise the money, and they carry insurance on it, and they do a cleanup once a year. There's really no organized effort behind maintaining the World War II Memorial or even the bandstand because a lot of the summertime programs, if you do a Memorial Day program, POW MIA program, happens around the World War II Memorial, I mean, the Vietnam Vets Memorial. So, we have an organized effort to clean up that area, and then if there's enough people, they kind of like go off and maybe do the, the bandstand, or they'll wander over to the World War II Memorial. But the, the focus really is on the Vietnam Veterans Memorial because that's where the ceremonies will start taking place come the end of May. Some of the plaques too look a little like they could be coming off the walls. So, a small committee of people that would keep their eye on things down there, this is coming apart, that's falling down, this could be painted, power washed, I think would help, so we can have a nice respectable place to honor our veterans, especially our local veterans. Right now, when I'm down there, there are people who spend time at both memorials, but basically, it's just a pass-through to get from one, from the street to the other part of the island, and I think, I just think it's lacking. It could be so much more. Pottstown Veterans Community Day, September 23rd, from 11 to 4. You could see there, the community day, twofold event, to provide a destination for a day of community togetherness and entertainment for the greater Pottstown area, within the context of recognizing the service of the veterans in our community amidst the war memorials in Pottstown Memorial Park. Proceeds from this event go to the support of the memorial, of the World War II Memorial this year. The proceeds will always go to support something on the island, one of the memorials, landscaping, lighting, whatever, whatever Parks and Recs thinks that they would need, we would try to be a support system for them. Oh, opening ceremony. We start with a, I think what it is, a great opening ceremony, and it's the heart of the community day. This year, we're doing a boat motorcycle ride into the park. They will be escorting our World War II honorees. We have four this year. Unfortunately, one just passed away on August 20th. Unfortunately, one just passed away on August 20th, and we will also be honoring him still. We have the Hamilton Celtic Pipe and Drums, the High School AFROTC, Boy Scout Troop 99, we'll have the, a solo performance for the Star Spangled Banner and God Bless America. A Hero's Welcome will honor all the veterans present. We have our Glass Tier Hero Award and more. It's changing almost every day. The Glass Tier Hero Award was created by the Veterans Island Project, will honor the local patriots who answered the call when their country needed them, who returned home and served as an example to others of what it means to live a life of honor and respect for both your community and country. The awarding of the glass tier is the centerpiece of our Veterans Community Day, a celebration to help celebrate a duty well-served and a life well-lived. This isn't for some heroics, this is just the guy who was called to serve, went, did his duty, came home, and lived a good life. The award, as you could see there, that's a picture of it, is designed and donated by Randy Doty. Oops, I jumped up a little bit. Last year, we honored Mr. Ken Saylor and Mr. Al Coats, both Korean War vets, and this year, we have Mr. Joseph Howard, Mr. Lawrence Belts, and the late Mr. Sandy Laggie. Mr. Laggie, I think some people here would remember him as a plumber for many, many years, but he was also a Pottstown policeman. Mr. William Herter will receive a special award. He is 100 years old, and he's a World War II veteran, having served in the US Navy. These guys will come in on the motorcycle ride, they're in a vehicle, and be escorted to the World War II Memorial where the ceremony will happen this year. These are a list of some of our participants. We have the Hospitals Alliance of Veterans, Mosaic Community Land Trust, Montgomery County VA, we have the Coatesville VA, the PA Military Vehicle Association, Pottstown YMCA, you could see, we have Tom Quigley and Tim Hennessy handing out awards, and along with our mayor. We have the Philadelphia Department of Veteran Affairs, the Rotary, Kiwanis Alliance Club, Mission Barbecue, the Liberty War Birds, and a few more, a few more organizations showing up. We will be putting on a Hometown Hero Wall where we'll ask people to send in pictures or a letter to their veterans. We only want copies of pictures, nothing original, because we don't, we're not going to be giving them back. They'll be on display during Community Day, and hopefully, eventually, maybe we'll find a permanent spot for it someplace. There's our main flyer in the middle. We have a flyer for the motorcycle kickoff event that is actually going to start at the American Legion in Birdsboro. They'll ride all the way down 724, down 100 to Hanover, stop at the Quake Club where they're going to pick up the World War II vets, and then they'll ride a little bit through the downtown until they arrive at the park through the Manatoni entrance. Sly Fox is going to be doing a beer garden, and they are also hosting a mini-can jam, $10 for a team of two. Your grand prize is, you win a spot in next week's major can jam. We have two bands, the Joe Kershaw Band, and then we have Kendall Conrad, and we also have VJ, DJ Vets, Jeff and Mike. The can jams, we have a moon bounce, face painting, an obstacle course for kids, games, door prizes, and of course, the roller derby girls dunk tank. I think a lot of people enjoy that. So also happening on that day, we have the second Latin, Latino festival down at the riverfront, and I was told that there's going to be a shuttle that will transport people back and forth between the two events if they want to attend both that day. Okay. We do have sponsorships, if anyone is interested, any businesses or personal, we have the Hometown Hero Wall sponsor. Video, we are going to videotape the whole event. The gentleman is going to start at the very beginning of the bike ride in Birdsboro. Three-star, two-star, one-star, anyone's interested. Our money is being kept by the Pottstown Rotary Community Endowment Fund. They have partnered with us on that, to help us with the finances. So you may say, how can you help? Become a volunteer for Community Day, we'll need some volunteers to help out with the different things going on. Anyone know someone who would want to be a part of the project? You belong to a community organization, have them support the Veterans Island Project. And of course, the biggest thing is to get the word out. Always seems getting the word out sometimes could be the hardest. The summary about this really is to have Memorial Park, the island, solely dedicated to our veterans, with eye-catching memorials, public art, landscaping, and educational information, I believe is a natural evolution of the space as it exists today. Veterans Island would serve yet as another anchor along with the Carousel, Mini Golf, the soon-to-be-permanent Cold Bookdale Railroad Station, the Montgomery County Community Gallery, Potts Grove Manor, Schuylkill River Trail, and the robust schedule of events already held at the park that will enhance the tourism aspect of both Memorial Park and the Western Gateway and the Pottstown area. Up until this point, many attempts have been made to keep the park dedicated to the memory of our veterans. Social clubs such as the Rotary and Kiwanis have been involved as far back as 1919. We would hope to create, to continue that effort. Our intention is to create a respectful, peaceful, and inspiring place to honor those who have served our country and sacrificed so much. The end. So are there any questions, or?
Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you. I hope everybody can attend and hope to see you there and have your support. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is our presentation to BASF for 860 Cross Street.
Is there anyone here from ACTIO?
Oh. That's fine, though. How you guys doing today? I'm Robert DePiero from ACTIO Corporate Asset Advisors. I'm working on behalf of BASF. I was a little caught off guard there, sorry, guys.
All right.
So, we've been working with Mike on transacting this property over to the borough, and turning it into something that the Parks and Recreation Department can use. So, we're in the process right now, we submitted, I forget exactly how long ago, the environmental documentation, I believe you've seen it, if that's my...
Correct.
Okay. And, right now, I think the main goal here is to figure out what the exact use would be, what the borough would be looking to use the site for. We then can finalize the documentation and work towards the cleanup of the site to deliver you a clean site, basically ready to be capped and turned into... Our goal would be a parking lot for the park across the street. I've heard there might be a basketball use on top of that that might, might be needed or wanted.
Yes.
So, you know, just be to work with you guys and figure out the exact use for the park.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I, again, I apologize.
I do have a question. You'll be able to answer it, and I've been working fairly closely with Michael on this project, and we reviewed the environmental documents, and it does say in there that you're, that you're going to remediate the soil in accordance with PA DEP and EPA standards.
Yes.
However, it also appears that there's TCEs in the, in the soil and in the groundwater. So, and, and the report that, that you, that you provided doesn't mention how you're going to specifically remediate, or whether or not DEP will require you to remediate contaminants in the groundwater. So, that is one question that we have to consider.
Okay. Do you guys have an environmental consultant you've been working with, or someone that could list out a, I guess, your concerns? Maybe it's you guys, that's fine. But just list your concerns on how you want it cleaned, or your expectations of how you want the site delivered, that we can then discuss internally?
Absolutely.
Because, so we're, we have a corporate meeting, it's actually at the end of this week, so if it's a quick turnaround, that would be great. It's hard to hurt everybody at BASF, the appropriate figureheads to discuss any site, you know, across the portfolio, but if we could have your thoughts and expectations, we can then update the document accordingly to sort of help the transaction along. A big thing for us is we didn't know the exact use. So, if, if it wanted to, if you guys wanted to take it to a residential standard, it's a much different standard than if you want to cap it and put a parking lot on it, because of air quality control and soil remediation and groundwater. Most stuff that comes into groundwater is coming out of soils. So when you remove all the soils, it helps with the groundwater, and then it's sort of natural, you know, cleansing.
So, so perhaps, to speed this along, Justin, you could step outside and get things moving along, and we'll pick it up from there.
Okay.
Just a quick question. What happens if you do nothing? So those, those contaminants are in the soil, and those contaminants are in the groundwater. So if you do nothing, what happens?
I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
To deal with the contaminants that are there now, that you're saying are there now, Justin, TCE, the contaminants that are in the soil, that are in the groundwater now with no remediation, is that, is that not an environmental hazard as it stands?
Well, I mean, I'm not the expert in that, but, I mean, I would assume that having a cap site would be better for the environment than having an uncapped site with chemicals leaching into, into the ground. My concern, and I want to be clear, in that we want to understand what the borough is getting with this property, what responsibilities we have, or liabilities we have, and that's something we can, we can discuss so that we can get a clearer understanding of that, because I think the only, you know, the only way we'd be interested in this property is that, is that it was a plan that was approved by the community.
Yeah, we work closely with the DEP and all environmental laws. We'd work with you guys, and that's, in essence, what the contract, the purchase and sale agreement, or the documentation for the transaction would stipulate, who's responsible for what, how it's going to be delivered, and then at the end of the day, what responsibilities still fall with what parties. So, it's legally documented, you know, however it's structured and agreed upon, you know, I think everybody can, we can come to a place where everybody's happy, I think. And at the end of the day, it's not going to be an empty site, it'll at least be able to be used for something adding value to the community.
I was, I was kind of under the impression that they wanted to put some sort of a recreational site there, like, you know, have it, have it capped, and I know we talked about having a cap because of the pollutants, but I think they also talked about some sort of recreational area. I don't know if it was a playground, and you had mentioned a basketball court, I'm not sure, but that's what we had discussed.
So our, our plan for this evening was to come to a point where Monday night, we were going to ask you to consider a motion to allow us to move forward conditionally in the acquisition of the property, as long as the parameters that the solicitor set forth were met. However, as, as listening to this discussion, I don't think that all the pieces fell into place that I thought would, so maybe perhaps Justin can get some details before you leave?
Absolutely, and I...
And then perhaps we can put it together for Monday night.
Yeah, I think we're, we're almost there. If we can get the proposed uses, and then we would marry that into the agreement that once you guys pass the motion, work on signing, and then we finalize what the cleanup standards are for us to proceed to a transaction.
Fair enough. All right.
Okay. So we'll take the time, then? All right. Thanks for your time, guys, I apologize again.
Thank you.
That listed all the contaminants. I, I think when this was first presented, whatever month that was, I said, can the EAC please look at this and come back with some commentary? Because that's their, their whole thing, is to give the Environmental Advisory Committee counsel for, for the borough. So, before Monday, when we, I, I think we're rushing into this, when we're talking about agreeing to, to take on a property that has, we're talking about pollutants and things like that, I, I don't know. I'd like to hear from the EAC regarding this property and the report.
I don't know if they've been contacted or not. My understanding was that was going to happen if they've had even a meeting, the opportunity to review it at this point, getting a quorum, I don't know, but I'll have an answer for you on that.
It's at this time that council needs to decide, do we want to go forward? And, and look at it. Nothing more. Correct? Yeah. Okay. Number nine is...
Can I just say that TCE is, there's strong evidence that it can cause kidney cancer in people, and some evidence for trichorol ethylene-induced liver cancer. But I think the DEP should be able to tell us at what level that's not possible, once they cap it. I mean, that's something they would have to tell us, because they're the ones who have the grids to determine the chemical effects.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I mean, we have this Environmental Advisory Committee, and why not utilize them and at least have them look it over as well? I mean...
Great. Okay, nine is the 2016 Borough Audit by our favorite auditors.
Good evening, everyone. Five? What if I do it in four, will that be okay? No, I will try to be quick and just hit the main highlights. I'm Bill Brislowski, I am the partner with Maile LLP, responsible for the audit of the borough, the thick packet, which I hopefully you all have a copy of, it should be the bound report. If you flip two pages, four through six, that's our opinion on the audit for 2016, which is an unqualified or clean opinion, which is the best opinion you can get. One highlight that I wanted to put, mention in there is, it mentions a number of accounting pronouncements that came out recently that the borough adopted. The most important of those is the number 68, it's on page five, second paragraph, where it mentions those pronouncements. 68 had to do with the pension plans. Last year, the borough adopted that provision for the police pension plan, and this year they did it for the non-uniform pension plan, and the reasoning was there was some paperwork that had to be filed on behalf of the non-uniform plan, which got completed in early in 16, so that's why there was the timing issue between adopting it last year for police and the non-uniform in 2016. Then there's a various pages after that, there are the management discussion and analysis that continues over to page 20. That's basically management giving their story as to what happened during the year. But what I wanted to point out to council, if you flip to page, page 25 of the audit, we'll see the general fund. You'll see there that, that it shows that there's a million and three deficit for 2016. I just wanted to point out that 900, a little over 900,000 of that were assets that were budgeted for and being held by general fund for the other post-employment benefits for retirees. If you've heard my presentation the last four or five years, we've been warning about that liability growing and that the borough should set aside assets to pay for that liability in future years. Two years ago, the borough started to do that. There needed to be formal paperwork for a trust to be set up for that. Again, just like the non-uniform plan, that paperwork was completed in 16. And if you flip over to page, page is 31, you'll see that there's two post-employment trust funds that were set up, one for police retirement, and another one that's listed there as OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. And that's those assets coming out of the general fund and into the formal trust. Then there's various footnotes that continue after those statements, all the way back to page... 83. The first few pages are just basic accounting pronouncements. The first few pages are just basic accounting pronouncements that the borough follows, followed by some additional disclosures that explain some of the assets' liabilities and commitments of the borough. Towards the back of the report is the single audit that we performed for the borough on the federal funds. Again, that was a clean opinion. The federal fund that was audited this year was the transportation money, which is run through part. And we had no compliance issues or control issues over that program for 2016. Does anybody have any questions on the audit report? There were two separate letters. Hopefully you have those in front of you. The thicker of the two, which is known as the SAS 114 letter, goes through basically a, just a quick summary of how the audit went, some of the things we encountered, then encounter. And happy to say that there was no major disagreements with management over any issues in accounting. There were journal entries that we had to propose for the audit. There was nine of them, but eight of those nine related to establishing the non-uniform plan under the new guidance. As you can imagine, when being the non-uniform plan, it involves various departments of the borough and the borough authority itself. So those adjustments were between us and management, spreading those liabilities and expenses across those various departments and the borough authority. The other smaller letter is a letter of just, there was a recommendation we had to management this year, not a material weakness or anything along those lines, just came to our attention that the borough should probably adopt a formal conflict of interest policy that's signed off annually by council and the employees, just for any business relations that anyone may have. It's good practice to have the borough's formal policy. There is a state form that I believe you, everyone signs each year, which could probably be incorporated into that policy, but it's, it's just the state form. The borough should probably have its own policy and, you know, meet the guidelines that you'd be happy with. And then, like I said, annually, have that signed off because in one year's time, a lot of things change.
This would be in addition to the ethics form?
Well, or incorporate the ethics form as part of your policy. Maybe you don't want to sign two forms, but incorporate that in, but have a formal policy that, you know, states what you believe should be disclosed or not disclosed. Any questions?
Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Seeking a resolution for the 2018 MMO Police Pension Plan. Oh, I missed one. Everyone, let's back up. Number 10 is a presentation from the North End Fire Company, the radio obligation.
Actually, Mr. Saylor is here.
Good evening. Well, the good news is I'm not here asking for any this time. In your package, you'll find a letter that was drafted by Chief Dave Onnick. Basically, we understand that the lack of payments on the radios up to this point needs to be rectified. And if you look at the second page of our financials, we have a plan that will allow us to repay the radios and, and, you know, guarantee the payment as our loans get paid off. And the outlines in the letter, basically, you know, starting in January of 2018 with $500 and increasing to $1,300 in September of 19. If you look on the second page, that's when some of our loans are scheduled to pay off, which will ensure us to make the payments if you are willing to agree to restructure.
So there is, as council may recall, there is a promissory note that's still outstanding for North End. Total amount, I believe, and if they tell correctly if I'm wrong, I believe it's $55,600 and some odd dollars. And there is a payment plan that was set forth because of financial difficulties. North End has been unable to, to meet those terms. However, they've made it clear that they still recognize their obligation in, in paying for the radios, reimbursing the borough for that expense. Staff has looked at this and it'll be staff's recommendation that we allow this to move forward so that we can put it to rest and get the money paid back and get the radios in their hand as soon as they're available to be gotten into their hands.
We had agreements with the fire companies in the past that they would, since we afford them monies each year and fund them, that they would come to our meeting once a month and report what it is they're doing with it. Should that be part of this new agreement?
That certainly, I don't know that it should be part of the promissory agreement, that that would be between Mr. Garner to determine, but at the end of the day, I certainly think it's a topic worthy of discussion.
Yeah. This might go back two, three years and only one of the four fire companies is coming in and telling us what it is that they're doing with the taxpayer money that we return to them. And I think our people out there would like to know.
Understood.
And that would be in addition to the reports that they give before they were. So you could send a representative here each month and let us know what you're doing, where you're going. I did read some of the, the projects you have going and certainly more than was done in the past and that's good.
Baby steps. That's all we can take right now is baby steps.
Still going forward.
Yep.
Mr. President, I did reach out to them. I have expressed on numerous occasions that they should come and address council each month. I will, you know, re emphasize that with that you guys are expecting a report.
No, we very much like to know, especially on a committee roll.
Meeting when the public can see and hear the activity that's going on with our fire companies.
I will re emphasize that.
Thank you.
We actually have them on the Monday night meeting, Emergency Services.
Okay. Consider switching all of that to Wednesdays. All the reports. Okay.
Rather than having them come present personally?
Could be.
If, if, I mean, if they, if they have somebody available, but if they don't have somebody available.
Right. At least it would be in our packet and we can pass that on. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll list that for Monday. Now, word 11. Resolution 2018 MMO Police Pension Plan.
Yes, the actuary will just prepare the MMOs. We do this every year. So this is the MMO that we'll be paying in 2018.
Correct. That's in our file.
Yes. For the police and, well, the next one, the nine-year pension.
Comments or questions? Okay, we'll list that for Monday. 12 is Resolution 2018 MMO Nonuniform Pension Plan. Same thing. Comments, questions? We'll list that for Monday.
Can we just explain to the public, I'm sure they're not really that interested, but what the minimum municipal obligation means?
Minimum municipal obligation.
It's a calculation that the actuary does based on the amount of money the funds have earned, investment-wise, and what the projected expenses are going to be, what we need to keep the fund solvent. And that's what the municipality has to contribute. We could contribute more if we had it, but that's the minimum that we have to contribute.
All right, we'll list that. 13. Not speaking French, we're going to discuss the Fait En Blanc, Alcohol in Smith Family Plaza for September 8th. We would like to take action on this this evening. We have heard about it in the past, so I am seeking a motion to approve.
So I believe Peggy Lee Clark is here to explain it since Sheila was unable to make the meeting.
Okay. I was trying to leave you off the hook, but.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. To end the season of pop-up restaurants, Padita, Paid, and Hobart's Run are working collaboratively on a Fête En Blanc. That's when everybody comes in white. I know it's after Labor Day, but we're going to break that rule. I know there's a lot going on in the borough, celebration of the lights at the school district, et cetera, that evening, but we hope you will come to Smith Family Plaza. Before you, we are asking for approval of Alcohol in Smith Family Park. Anybody that's been to an en bloc, you come dressed in white, you bring your white chairs with your white picnic basket. There will be wine by Stonekeep Meadery, which is a winery that is at the farm most weeks. And so they will be there offering samples as well as they will have bottles for sale there. There is also some leftover Sly Fox donated beer from the other pop-up restaurants. So it's first come, first served. We hope you will join it. It's 5:30. Lights have been hung and hopefully the rain will hold off. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is not an event that requires LCE licensing, but it is an event, since it's in our park, we have an open container ordinance and we don't allow alcohol in the parks. We require council to waive those.
All right. I have a motion and a second. It's at this time, I need to have time for public comment. Any comment? Hearing none? Okay, any discussion from the councilors?
Are we required to wear white to this event?
No.
What a white toga. Okay, no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. 14 is the Halloween Parade, request to close High Street on October 24th, 2017.
The Rotary has made application for the Halloween Parade to hold a parade downtown assembling, where are we at here? 5:30. At any rate, they would like High Street closed for the purpose of, yeah, 5:30 to 7, terminating around 8:30 so that the Halloween Parade can go forth.
Same as last year.
Same as last year.
Okay. There is no discussion, but list that for Monday. 15. Toss Your Turkey 5K to close College Drive. And I think we discussed in the past that 16 is also to close College Drive and Keystone Boulevard. Would they both close Keystone Boulevard?
Both, both events would be College Drive and Keystone, basically from Hanover to High Street. Both events, one being the Toss Your Turkey on Thursday, November the 23rd, and the Funky Santa 5K Run on Saturday, December 3rd. They're requesting the closure of the street because that 5K run course actually runs on Keystone, College Drive in that area and then on the Riverfront Trail.
Okay. Any discussion on either of these?
Has the college, I mean, the November 23rd, Thanksgiving, but the December 3rd date, has the college been in contact and are okay in terms of?
The December 3rd is a Sunday, so it should not have an effect on the college, but we certainly can reach out to them just to verify that it's not going to be a problem. Do that before Monday.
Okay. All right, we'll list both 15 and 16 for Monday. 17. Independence Day Parade, very early application to close High Street for July 4th.
Correct. We have an application from P. Richard Franz to close High Street on July the 4th from 9:30 a.m. to around 11:30 a.m. for the purpose of the Fourth of July Parade, or the Independence Day Parade, excuse me. So it'd be an authorization to close High Street between Madison and Adams to Manatoni Street.
I would like to table that because I think it's a little bit too early and also they should give the opportunity to other organizations around Passtown. And the Rotary should invite other organizations to participate in that. Right? You don't mind, we can table maybe for two more.
Any other comment?
I just think that's a good idea. I mean, the Rotary did an excellent job with the parade, but in moving forward with, you know, promoting unity in different events that represent the whole town, that, you know, what I initially had proposed was to alternate the times, that groups were leading and that they would co-facilitate. So I think it would be good that those parties that were included last year and kind of treated pretty abruptly, it was kind of an egregious process that ensued from this table and other portals. So I think in the interest of town unity and Americana, which the Fourth of July Parade is all about, that your suggestion is good to table it. And secondarily, that parties could be drawn into a common table to talk about how this could be a more unified process.
All right. Well, we can list it for Monday evening and have a motion in one direction or another. So we'll discuss that Monday. 18. Board vacancies. Code Board of Appeals for one alternate. Have we any?
Do not believe, no, we do not.
None at this time. B. Human Relations Commission, one vacancy to expire, 5/8/21.
Marcia, is there a recommendation from the Human Relations Commission?
We don't have any Tuesday after your Monday meeting, so we're going to probably be active on that Tuesday. So we'll have something for you for next week.
We'll see what happens over the weekend. 19. Comments from Citizens Present. Rules for the evening, each person gets three minutes.
There are no comments.
No comments from Citizens Present. About the comments from the councilors. Councilor Kirkland.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilor Byers.
I would like to lay the line for that.
On the 23rd. Okay. Counselor Arms. Vice President Miller.
I have a couple. I want to just, the Finance Committee has given management some suggestions for some budget savings for this, for this budget year and also going forward. So I just want to caution everybody as you're looking at the budget and you're giving your suggestions to take caution into not cutting into emergency services. Our primary function of municipality is the safety and protection of our citizens. We have a $17 million pension obligation to the future of our police officers. The radios that, the promissory notes for the radios for the fire departments, that's an unfunded mandate. We have dropped a quarter million dollar unfunded mandate on a department that's been underfunded for years already. And I just want to share with you an anecdote that I heard earlier today, which is more sad than funny, that the comparison was, well, Pottstown is receiving the same allocation in fire funding as New Hanover, and New Hanover was able to purchase their own fire truck. So let these statistics sink in for you. Pottstown Borough has a 9.1% unemployment rate, a 19.3% poverty rate, 16.2% over the age of 65, 326 tax exempt properties, you're going to be adding the Pottstown Hospital to that next year, 86 properties that are blighted or certified pending. New Hanover Township has 94.1% owner occupied properties. The median value of an owner occupied property in their township is $302,500. The median household income is $86,250 and the persons living in property are only 3%. So it is no surprise to me that New Hanover Township can afford to give monies to their fire company to help them purchase a fire truck. So going to the future, and I know that is. So going to the future, and I know that it's not going to settle on this budget, but moving forward, you know, we have to really look at, again, how we're doing business, and the personnel costs and the insurance are the major increases that we're dealing with as a municipality. And I think that, you know, this really needs to be looked at in an objective way. I think that we might have some overlapping of people doing the same functions. I think where there is some exorbitant salaries, there are also some salaries that are underpaid. So to maintain objectivity, it would be my recommendation that we had an outside independent study analysis of the employment and wages of the borough moving forward. Whether council took those recommendations or not would be up to them, but I think it would be a good thing.
Councilor Culp.
Oh, wait, before I let you go. To answer your question, Councilor Culp, Animal House Project is located at 1055 South Hanover Street, Suite 1, phone number 484-558-0467, and they can be reached at... They can be looked up at animalhouseproject.org.
Any discussion? Councilor Culp.
We have quite a few very interesting events going on in Pottstown, and I'm hoping that residents and surrounding areas would participate in a lot of these events. They're very good. And the Veterans Event, I think, is really going to be quite wonderful, and I was really impressed with what they're going to do. And I hope we have people that are interested and will participate in that event and many of the other events we have going on. Thank you.
Councilor Prosser.
I think the vigil went well. I'm very happy that Mr. Prosser was able to put it together.
Okay. That is... Mayor Thomas.
I'd just like to encourage, again, people to take advantage of the Night for Healing. It's being conducted through Kingdom Life Church and about 13 or 14 congregations so far. And it just is a time for everyone to be able to come together and take communion at a common table and wake up the next day and support your local house of faith, wherever that may be. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to repeat my enthusiasm and my thanks and appreciation to our wonderful Pottstown Police Force for the commendation they got this evening and for their day-to-day service to us. And as for this, May Dean Gernt.